Thirty-five, so let's, let's, uh, let's call a meeting to order and we'll do a quick roll call before we do Pledge of Allegiance. Jason Beebe, are you present?
Present.
Janet Hutchinson?
Here.
Patricia Youngman?
Here.
Gail Merritt?
Present.
Jeff Papke?
Here.
And Teresa Rumble?
Here.
And Mayor's present, so please rise for the flag sleuth.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation unchallenged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Forrester, are there any additions to the agenda?
No additions tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, and the regular meeting brief was circulated under, uh, under consent agenda. Are there any questions, concerns, or corrections that need to be made? Is there a motion to approve the council, pardon me, the consent agenda as circulated?
This is Janet Hutchinson. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as circulated.
Thank you, Janet. Is there a second?
This is Patricia, I'll second it.
Patricia, thank you. Again, any questions or concerns? All right, all in favor, we'll do a, uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Jason Beebe?
Aye.
Janet Hutchinson?
Aye.
Patricia Youngman?
Aye.
Gail Merritt?
Aye.
Jeff Papke?
Aye.
Teresa Rumble?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye as well, so we have, have unanimous approval. Um, we will do visitors appearances and requests at the end. The council business, I see nothing on the agenda. And staff reports, uh, and requests. First, we have supplemental budget clerical correction, Liz Shutey. Liz, are you on?
Lori, are you on?
Yes, I am. It, it looks like Liz might just be muted.
Liz, are you muted?
Yes, I'm sorry, apologize.
Okay.
So tonight, I'm, there is a staff report and some information on two specific budgets, the Transportation FDC Fund and the Building Facility Fund. This has to do with a clerical correction. Uh, Resolution fourteen forty-six was adopted on the twenty-third day of June twenty-twenty. It needs the correction to the revenue portion of the adjustment. These changes do not affect the total resources or expenditure amounts of the original adjustment. They only recognize the, um, additions or deletions to the revenue estimated projections. The numbers were considered in the original adjustment, but they were left out of the resolution. And this is why the total's balanced in the first, in the resolution, and also in the correction. There is no fiscal impact to this, um, and there is no action required by the council. As the budget officer, I have made the corrections in writing and I am informing the governing body at the scheduled meeting immediately after the corrections were found, or the needed corrections were found. Is there any questions?
I hear no questions. Liz, thank you for bringing that to our attention and correcting that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, was, um, Mr. Forrester, did you have any other comments regarding that, or would you like to continue then with your, your, um, city manager's report?
Uh, I'll move on to the city manager's report unless there's any other questions about, uh, uh, the supplemental budget clerical correction. So with that, I'm gonna move on to the city manager's report. Short report tonight, we'll start out with, uh, Public Works. As, as everybody knows, we did, uh, doing our, in the middle of our grind and inlay project, got some extreme weather, uh, in terms of temperatures that we're faced with, so we've, uh, been able to move at a pretty good pace and according to our city engineer and public works director, Mr. Klon, uh, looks like we have a shot at finishing the project up by this Friday, which would be wonderful. Um, again, it's going very well and, uh, if you, if any of you have driven on some of the new surfaces, pretty darn nice. So, thank you, Eric, and, and special shout-out to the Public Works team and Scott and his crew, uh, on the streets. Um, the last few meetings, we've been pretty tight with, uh, Muriel at, uh, Creek County Health Department in terms of her providing some updates. She's unavailable this week, um, so we've reached out, or she's helped us reach out with, uh, Vicky Ryan to, uh, give us an update, and really, there isn't much of an update. So, uh, we do have a, uh, an uptick in COVID cases here in Creek County, um, in terms of about one a day. Uh, we've seen that, uh, over the last couple of weeks. Um, hospitalizations are still manageable at this point, and she'll keep us updated, but she really didn't feel like she needed to, to give us a, a report as we've done the past few weeks. So I just wanted the council to know that Lisa, Morgan, and I are in close communication with Muriel and her team, and we will be inviting them back, uh, as, as things develop or, uh, processes from the state change. And with that, uh, that pretty much wraps us up, uh, other than I, I've asked Lori Hooper, uh, our finance manager, to provide the council an update on where we're at with shut-offs as it relates to water and sewer services. So with that, Lori, are you ready to, uh, give us an update, please?
I am, thank you, Steve. Good evening, Lori Hooper, accounting manager for the record. The last time I was here, I informed the council of the city's plan to offer a payment plan and relief credit to those who are behind on their city utility bills. Since then, the number of delinquent customers has gone down from a hundred and thirteen in June to a hundred and five in July, which is still roughly twice the average from the year before COVID-19 changed our operations. We have several people have taken advantage of the payment plan option. Right now, we have seven people who have signed the contract. We have seventeen people who are, we're waiting for signatures from. We've sent out mailers twice over the last month, and Finance has contacted, um, approximately fifty-five customers over the last week. The original plan, when this was presented about two months ago, was to allow customers to get on this temporary payment plan through August tenth, and then we would have our first shut-off for non-payment on August eleventh. Since this was first proposed, daily COVID-19 infections have increased throughout the state, and in checking with our neighboring cities, both Bend and Redmond do not plan on having, um, interrupting water service due to non-payment at this time or anytime soon for their delinquent customers. What management's now intending to, is to send out door hangers to every customer who would have gotten their water shut-off on August eleventh, asking the customer to call the city in regards to their water bill. Finance will then inform the customer of their options to avoid shut-offs in September and give them the opportunity to get on the payment plan with the relief credit. This effort would hopefully catch the people who do not open their mail or could not be reached through phone calls. Basically, we'll be intending, extending the temporary relief credit program to August fourteenth, and the earliest the city would shut off water due to non-payment would be September ninth. I just wanted to give an update as to where we are with this and make council, council aware of this change. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions?
This is Councilman Papke, I have just a quick one and, and just shooting ideas out there. First off, Lori, I appreciate what you and all the staff are doing, um, to really help the residents, and this is a difficult thing when we're talking about shutting somebody's basic services off. And you mentioned about them calling, um, I guess hoping everybody has a means to call if they don't, and again, I don't know how we do this safely knowing that City Hall is basically shut down, but is, would there be an opportunity where they, there could safely be a conversation if somebody wanted to come down and be able to talk face-to-face with staff?
Jeff, I, I, let me, let me take that one. So, and Lori, please chime in if I'm off-base, but what we've done and, and from other aspects of, of managing the city, uh, Councilor Papke, is we are, um, facilitating face-to-face meetings. For example, I had, uh, we had some face-to-face meetings with the Prideville Group, um, with , uh, Darcy in particular, and what we did is we schedule an appointment. We have our, uh, risk station, I call it, uh, as you walk in the back door, where we have, uh, temperature checks, uh, sanitation, uh, available, and PPE. Um, and then basically, you know, we're, we're having a conversation, maintaining our distance, social distancing, and, uh, um, utilizing the PPE as, as required. And that's been successful. So from my perspective, uh, Lori, again, I'll, I'll be looking to you to confirm or, um, go a different direction, but I would say that yes, that is possibility, uh, or probability or likely to happen, that we could, uh, for sure have face-to-face, uh, with people that want to come in and discuss their situation. I think the important thing in this case, and Lori talked about it, is to get those, uh, door hangers on there, so, uh, we're making every effort to ensure that, uh, the opportunity's been communicated, the status of their account's been communicated, and the opportunity to, uh, participate in the workout, uh, process has been communicated. And, um, so for those people that want to come in and visit with us, I think we can accommodate that. Lori, would you agree?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely. And, you know, if, and if it's after hours, if they want to drop a note in our Dropbox and say, "Hey, I want to come by at this time", we can definitely accommodate that as well.
Thank you, Lori. Any other questions from the council? It's a very sensitive issue, so we, uh, appreciate the efforts being made.
Thank you.
Mr. Forrester, any other comments?
No, I, I, you know, I just remind council, you know, this is, uh, this is the, you know, the direction the staff's going, and I think as we continue to, uh, work our way through the COVID pandemic and whatever's in store for us in upcoming months, we'll need to continue to revisit this on a monthly basis, so, uh, you know, we'll keep you aware of, of what our status is, what the numbers are telling us, the data's telling us in terms of how many are participating in the, uh, in the, uh, buy-down, uh, and with the advantage of the incentive and, you know, what, what those numbers are doing. But, uh, just keep in mind that this is something we're going to have to adjust on the fly as we continue to move, and, uh, I applaud, uh, the support that you've given Lori and Liz and the team to, uh, continue down this path and, uh, keep those vital services rolling for our community.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for Mr. Forrester? Okay, are there any committee reports from any of the council members? Are there any issues or subjects you would like to cover in a conversation at this point before we move into ordinances? All right, thank you. Um, then, let, then moving on into ordinances, ordinance number one-two-six-one, adopting changes to Prineville Code Section five-zero-point-two-two, first presentation, Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the ordinance in front of the council tonight is an ordinance that is going to be amending the code in particular with the franchise agreement on our, um, solid waste franchise agreement, which council probably remembers, uh, earlier this year, I believe in January, that franchise was changed from Holiday Enterprises LLC, uh, which was Prineville Disposal and had been, uh, the franchisee for a number of years, to now, uh, Republic Services of Oregon. In reviewing the franchise agreement over the last couple of months, in particular in looking at the city's franchise agreement to the counties, which also shares a franchise agreement with Republic, we felt it was important that both the county and the city code were consistent, and so these changes are in essence to make those two codes consistent with each other. Uh, the franchise agreement, uh, the city franchise agreement has not been updated for a number of years. The county has since been updated.
Which we did.
Which much more recently. Mr. Forrester was helpful in that, uh, that was prior to my time, but regardless, we wanted to make sure that our city code also reflected, uh, Mr. Forrester's good work, and so that's why we, uh, made the changes. We've negotiated with Republic Services, uh, of Oregon. I believe that they're in agreement with it, and we'd ask the, the council to pass it for its first presentation. Of course, I'm here for any questions that you may have.
And if I could, I'd, I'd just like to add that one of the, one of the critical path items in that adjustment that we're asking you to approve tonight has to do with those, that margin, um, targets between eight and twelve percent. That was something that the city helped the county craft, it's been very helpful. We've actually used that in our, um, analysis, our annual analysis of, um, the agreement and the franchise, and so, uh, when, after we reviewed, Jared and I reviewed the document, we realized that we hadn't updated our own document, even though we helped the county update theirs. So, um, that's, that's a very, my point would be, that's a very helpful tool in managing the franchise and the rates that are imposed by Republic or asked to be, uh, imposed by Republic and approved by you as council. So, we really appreciate having that margin, uh, trigger in there that we can manage this, this relationship with. So that's why it's very important to me that, uh, we get that included.
Are there any questions? And is there a motion to approve ordinance number one-two-six-one for its first presentate, presentation?
This is Councilor Beebe. I'll move to approve ordinance number one-two-six-one for its first presentation.
Councilor Papke, a second.
Thank you, thank you, both of you. Okay, so we have a motion with a second to approve ordinance number one-two-six-one, an ordinance adopting changes to Prineville Code Section five-two-point-zero, pardon me, five-zero-point-two-two, and adding five-zero-two-point-two-four. With that, uh, again, any questions or concerns? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Beebe, I'll say you.
Aye.
Janet Hutchinson?
Aye.
Patricia Youngman?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Gail Merritt?
Aye.
Mr. Papke?
Aye.
Teresa Rumble?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye as well. Motion passes for the first presentation. Uh, moving on to resolutions, Resolution number one-four-five-four, authorizing, authorization to efficiently minimize or mitigate the effects of COVID-19. Mr. Forrester?
I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. Reed to, uh, kick this off, if you don't mind, sir?
Sure. Uh, council, uh, we are on our second council meeting of the month. For the past several months, the second council meeting of the month has included, uh, a form of the resolution that's in front of you today. It in effect extends the emergency declaration that was originally done by the city in March. Uh, as we all know, and as, and as Mr. Forrester presented earlier, the COVID-19 pandemic unfortunately continues to be a national, state, and local emergency, and so this is imperative that we continue to keep the emergency. Again, the reason why we review it every thirty days is because we feel it's more, we've, we've suggested that it's a more democratic way to manage an emergency rather than just the government saying a blanket emergency. Um, additionally, with the federal, uh, debate right now regarding another CARES package, I think it's imperative that the city retains an emergency, uh, based upon potential, uh, reimbursements from the federal government.
And we have applied for a, a couple of different opportunities, not a huge amount of money, but we're, I know that Lori and Liz, uh, are tracking costs with the help of, uh, all our staff, and, you know, so we're prepared to participate in any kind of reimbursement opportunities and funding opportunities that relate to COVID costs. So we want to make sure to, Jared's point, that we, uh, have that information, we have that emergency status, uh, as part of what we do in it as we go forward.
Are there any questions? Or concerns? Okay, and you will note that if, this is due to expire on August thirty-first, on or before. Okay, uh, with that, is there a, anyone willing to move to approve Resolution number one-four-five-four?
This is Patricia Youngman, and I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution one-four-five-four.
Thank you, Patricia. Is there a second?
This is Janet Hutchinson, I'll second that.
Janet, thank you very much for your second. Again, are there any questions or concerns? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Jason Beebe?
Aye.
Janet Hutchis, Hutchinson?
Aye.
Patricia Youngman?
Aye.
Gail Merritt?
Aye.
Jeff Papke?
Aye.
Teresa Rumble?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye as well, so we have a unanimous approval of Resolution number one-four-five-four. And that does it for resolutions, and so we move into visitors appearances and requests. And as we discussed a couple of, two weeks ago, public comment over the past two weeks has been posted on our website. However, I did want to acknowledge and thank Heidi Sutherland for providing a book of support for our local law enforcement. The thoughtfulness and work that was put into this project is very much appreciated, and as I've heard from the council members, and I myself really appreciate the work that is being done by the police department, and want to extend our appreciation for the work that the police department has done, uh, to the Chief Cummins as well as all of the staff, and I know that, and Mr. Papke also had a comment to make as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, my, my thanks to Heidi and, and everyone who contributed to that positivity project. Uh, I was blown away, um, as I sat down and thought I could quickly go through it, realized I couldn't, and took the time to go through and read, and the pictures and the comments were spectacular, and I appreciate her spearheading that and the community stepping up, and as I've said before, just appreciate and support that our police department does, and contribute a lot of that, not just to the quality of the officers that we have, but the leadership that's being shown by Chief Cummins, and I've before publicly voiced my support and continue to do that support of Chief Cummins, um, and the department, and, uh, I hope that other councilmen, if you feel the same way, are willing to voice your support for, for the chief and the department also. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jeff.
Hi, this is Patricia Youngman, and I too want to say I am so impressed with our police department and Chief Cummings. Um, I've lived in other towns where the police are not nearly as friendly, kind, and ethical, and I just want to throw my hat in and say I truly support everything that they do.
Thank you, Patricia. Any other comments?
Yeah, this is Teresa Rodriguez, Rumble. Geez, I don't know who I am. I'm still learning to write my name. Um, I, I too want to express the, um, appreciation I have for our local law enforcement. Um, there's been some personal things in my life in the past, and, um, I can tell you firsthand that those police officers stepped up, um, they made an effort to reach out to my kids and my grandkids when we had some difficult times going on, and, um, you know, I, I just, I really appreciate the, the personality of our police department, let's say. It's, it's the personable attitude and the way that they, um, present themselves in public where the, the little things of giving out the, um, the gift certificate for, you know, a job good done, a good job done, and, um, you know, just praising our citizens that do good jobs. And, um, I can just say, like I said personally, I've had personal experience, and I can appreciate what they've had to deal with, um, you know, in our community, law enforcement in general. And, um, I appreciate them going out and risking their safety for mine every day.
Thank you.
This is Councilor Merritt. I would like to throw my support into our police department. I think we are very fortunate that we have the quality that we have. I've seen them in an emergency situation, I've seen them talking to first graders and just getting their whole attention, and I watched them working in the middle school. I think we're so fortunate to have the quality of police officers in our community.
Thank you. And all of that starts with the top, with the chief, so I, I appreciate his work and his dedication to the community.
If I could, I'd just like to say thank you for the council's support. Uh, we recognize that, uh, a lot of, we have a lot of support from the community, but, uh, support has to be earned every day with every action that we take. Um, one mistake can set us back, so we set our goals high, and we have some good things coming up in the near future that I hope to roll out in the next month where we continue to try to reach out to all aspects of our community and participate. I think one of the things we, I always tell my officers when they come here is we're not about community policing, we're actually a part of the community. We live here, our kids grow up here, and we need to be part of the community. I need to be able to, if I have to arrest someone one day and then chat with them at the food store the next, and I should have that kind of familiarity with the people that I, I deal with so that we can be part of the community. That's much farther than taking a, a law enforcement agency that's trying to be part of the community. We actually are, we participate, we volunteer, we care, uh, we go out and do things that no one ever knows. I'll be, I'm gonna tell you one quick story. Uh, one of my officers, Dallas, who has a, uh, real connection with helping the mental health folks, I found out recently, has been doing follow-ups on folks that have gotten help from Best Care where he goes out and makes sure that they're staying on their medications and they have everything lined up that they need so they can continue to be successful. No one asked him to do that, there's no policy that says to do that. That's just the quality of officer and human being that wants to help his community, not police his community. So thank you for the support, we'll try to continue to earn it, and we'll stay open to understand that even with the support, when changes are necessary, we have to move quickly and, and be willing to change and listen. Thank you, council.
Hey, chief, I didn't know you were on the, on the line still, so, um, I've always been, this is Councilor Beebe, but I've always been kind of a person, I'd rather tell you in person, uh, how I feel about things, but I just wanted to share, since this is about the only way we can do it now, um, that I support you a hundred percent, and I support your department, and I have, for a very long time, um, Officer Kaufman sat me down one time when I was going through a, a hard time in my life, and had a really long heart-to-heart talk with me, and, uh, it actually changed, changed me. It's about the time I decided, you know what, instead of taking from this community, it's time to give back, and, uh, uh, those are the kind of officers you have serving with you, and, um, and you as their chief, you're their leader, and I support you in what you do, and I support your crew, so.
Thank you, Jason. Any other comments? Your last comment?
Sure, this is Janet Hutchinson. So, I, I just wanted to thank Chief Cummings also. He's got my support for him and his whole department, and I was so impressed with his update today, and talking about the different house bills that just recently went into effect, and that they already are doing them. I mean, the only one that they weren't was the tear gas restrictions, but they don't have any tear gas, so it's, it's, um, great that they are above what recent laws have come into effect, that they've already implemented those within their department, and, um, it's a lot of kudos to the chief and his staff, but it's his leadership and the, um, kind of people that he gets on his staff. So, thank you very much for that, Dale.
Thank you, Janet. Is there a motion to adjourn this evening?
This is Teresa, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Teresa, thank you. Is there a second?
This is Patricia, I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion that's with a second. Um, I'll just call for a vote. Jason Beebe?
Aye.
Janet Hutchinson?
Aye, sorry.
Patricia Youngman?
Aye.
Gail Merritt?
Aye.
Jeff Papke?
I'm going to hold my vote for a second because I see Mr. Marx is trying to get recognized, is that correct?
I was trying to push buttons, but that is only if the mayor and the council would like a very quick update from Facebook. If not, then please continue. It is, I leave that to you.
We will suspend the vote, and Mr. Marx, would you continue?
Yes, absolutely. Mayor, thank you so much, council members and staff, thank you so much for this time. Last time I briefed the council was the very beginning of the COVID crisis, and we're very proud to be able to provide $450,000 to the school district and another $200,000 to small businesses in Creek County. Little did I know at the time, when all was said and done, we would reach about $1 million going into the community for COVID relief. I'm very happy to announce about 80% of that right now has been distributed, and that's in the hands of the people that need it the most. And then that another 20% is being distributed very soon here. And so that'll very soon be $1 million going to the people of Creek County who need COVID relief. I have an additional two announcements for this evening. I'll first just give you a very quick construction update. Let me know, we announced building number nine in June, that's the ninth building overall in the, the Primeville campus. Believe it or not, once that building is finished, that will mark almost 13 years of building here in Primeville. This year is our 10th anniversary of our first breaking ground way back in 2010. In terms of buildings seven and eight, those are still under construction, I'd estimate in aggregate, they're about 60 to 80% complete, just with the, the structures of building seven and eight. In that work, we've put in about 2 million total work hours completed in just those two buildings. We've only had three safety issues the whole time that resulted in any sort of lost time. We're very proud to say that. Building nine is just in the very beginning stages of construction, so there's, there's really not a construction update on that. And then I'll, I'll close the construction update with the fact, Primeville has more Facebook data center buildings than anywhere else in the entire world. We are now at 16 locations that are either open or in progress, and Primeville has the most data center buildings out of any of those in the entire world. So that's a, a pretty amazing milestone, and I'm proud to be part of it. In terms of a, a Facebook update, well, for the first time ever, more than 3 billion people use Facebook, Instagram, Messenger, WhatsApp around the world every single month. That includes 2.6 billion people that use Facebook alone, and then another 2.3 billion people that use one of our services every day. You may ask, how can we possibly handle all that use, all that traffic? Well, the reason we can handle that amount of growth in traffic is thanks to our data centers, just like we have here in Primeville. I mentioned there are only 16 of those in the entire world, and so having one here in Primeville is really special for us. There has been a shift in how people use Facebook during the pandemic. In many places, messaging volume has increased by 50%. Voice and video services have more than doubled across WhatsApp and Facebook Messenger. Live video has taken off. Before the pandemic, really, live streaming was used mostly for events you had. But now, since we're not really planning physical events, live streaming is a primary venue for virtual event. Even the Pope livestreamed one of his masses on Facebook. So every day we see about 800 million users engaging in some sort of livestream with Facebook. So now at this point, on behalf of the entire team at Facebook, I'm very proud to announce two additional educational grants that's going to the school district. The first is we're going to continue the push for our robotics program. We're providing an additional $52,000 in addition to our 2019 grant that will help provide robotics kits to all levels of students from elementary school all the way through high school. The elementary school kids, they use Lego kits, and then as you grow in age and in your grade, you use robotic kits that have more mechanical engineering, electronics, and even coding. So we're really proud to be able to support that program again in 2020. In addition, we're providing a $100,000 grant to expand the school district's career and technical curriculum. So this additional grant builds on our 2019 grant, where we provided $200,000 to help build seven skilled trade strands and, or curriculums within the school. That included things from manufacturing to healthcare to digital technologies. So this new grant helped build hands-on modules to help hands-on learning in those career and technical fields. So for things from construction to trade work, we want to move from theory and classroom teaching to hands-on teaching that can eventually lead to things like national trade certifications, even when you're in high school, for some of these careers. And finally, we're going to support, we're just starting to work with the school district to support a reading program that will highlight black authors and have discussions, live discussions with nationally recognized teen authors. And so we're going to try to put that program together for the fall. So to summarize, we're providing an additional $100,000 to the career and technical programs, and an additional $52,000 for robotics programs, that's on top of the previously announced COVID relief grants that was earlier in the year. So again, on behalf of the entire team at Facebook, it's really a privilege to be part of this community, it's a privilege to be part of helping students gain the education and skills they need for the future. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, William, thank you very much. And Jeff, thank you for catching that mic oversight, I didn't see the, didn't see that William was trying to get online, so, thank you. So let's get back to the vote. Mr. Papke, how do you vote?
Aye for the adjournment.
Okay, and Teresa Rumble? Teresa, I think you're muted.
Oh, aye.
Thank you.
Am I there now?
You are, you are, you, I have your vote as aye to adjourn. And the mayor votes aye, and we are adjourned. Thank you all for your attention and your participation.